Good evening, everyone. It's a regular annual reorganization board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Today is Tuesday, December fourteenth. The time is five twenty-nine. I'm gonna talk really slow. Here we are at the time is five thirty P M. Can I get roll call?
Trustee Benz?
Benz present.
Trustee Akas?
Present.
The French? Trustee La French? Did we lose her?
Present, I'm sorry, something was going on, I couldn't unmute myself.
No worries, and Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present. Moving on to one point oh four, pledge of allegiance. Could everyone please stand and put your right hand over your heart? Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Adoption of the agenda.
This is Benz and I move to adopt. Do we have any?
I'm sorry, propose additions, deletions, adjustments in order of business. This is Leve.
Madam President, yes, we do. For the resolution for this evening, three point oh one, we will be substituting for a new resolution that will be read out tonight.
Thank you. Okay, two point oh two, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Benz, I, I mo- motion to adopt.
Have a motion by Trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, Trustee La French.
And a second by Trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I. Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Before we get to section three. Give me a moment, just a minute. It is with great sadness that I announce the passing of Trustee Hunter. Tonight, we will be, today, actually. We, all the trustees, superintendent, and some district office, executive cabinet, we attended the memorial services for her. Can't believe it was all of a sudden, it was, you know, a sudden passing. So what I would like to do is, I need a motion to approve and read the resolution. Can I get a motion?
I'm motioning.
I have a motion by Trustee Akas. Is there a second?
A second, La French.
Second by Trustee La French. Adalanto Elementary School District Resolution for Trustee Amy Hunter. Birthday, August twenty-seven, nineteen sixty-three, Transition Day, November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Whereas Amy Hunter was elected to Adalanto Elementary School Board in November two thousand eighteen and was officially sworn in on December eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Whereas from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, through education and extensive training, Amy was elected by her fellow trustees as board president. Whereas in two thousand and ten, Amy found another level for women, a faith-based nonprofit organization dedicated to providing financial, emotional, and educational support services for women in the high desert community, particularly extremely low-income women and children. Whereas a valued leader and dedicated to the community, Amy had a passion for serving several nonprofits, including Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino County and High Desert Food Collaborative. Whereas a caring and thoughtful community leader, she spent her time and energy for the betterment of school, district, and community. Whereas Amy had a caring nature for others, whereas she provided valuable insight and developed strong friendships with her fellow trustees. Whereas Amy was a loving mother, I'm sorry, a loving wife, mother, she will be generally missed by all that knew and loved her, especially her husband Greg Hunter and children Fred, Selisa, Matthew, Faith, David, Alex, Joey, Alexa, and Caroline. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent recognize Amy Hunter for her commitment and contributions to the Adalanto Elementary School District and to celebrate her life. And now therefore be it resolved, we, as a community, extend our sincere condolences to her family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be adopted by the Adalanto Elementary School District and placed into the district and into the school and district permanent archives. A copy of this resolution be delivered to her family. This resolution is written by the Board of Trustees of the Adalanto Elementary School District on this fourteenth day of December, two thousand twenty-one. But Christine Turner, Board President, La Chala French, Board Clerk, Holly Akas, Board Member, Christine, Christina Benz, Board Member, and Amy Hunter, Board Member, Keenan Mitchell, Ph.D., Superintendent. Any trustees have any comments at this time? Trustee Benz, would you like to make a comment at this time?
The first year, we were about, voted in, Amy and I went on a lot, a lot of trainings together in San Diego. And we had a lot of laughs. And we would go to this one little Creole place. We had tried it out. And every time we went to San Diego, she insisted we go there, though I wanted to go try the handmade tortillas. She thought that was the best Creole food she had had, so that's where we always went. So if you ever have a chance to go to San, San Diego, to Old Town, right behind the Wally House, there's a little place. Got one cook and one server. But Amy swears they had the best Creole food she's ever had. And I will, from now on, make it a habit to go there when, when I can. And think about the good talks and times we had. And I am thankful that I have memories of her.
Thank you, Trustee Benz. Trustee Akas?
Yeah, I could write a book on her. She meant a lot to me. And I was very fortunate to be in her life. And she became a sister to me in so many ways. We would pray over every board meeting. And many times, you know, she could tell when I was hurting or when I was having problems, she could just sense it. And it was, it was interesting how close we were at times. We could almost read each other's minds and just give each other this look. And we were on the same path every single time. It was almost like God was talking to us and, you know, kind of putting the same thoughts in our head. I remember when we hired our superintendent. Me and Amy prayed over it. And I remember the stories that, that we had that, that one day when he was in there interviewing. She shared with me how the clock stopped. I shared with her that I had a feeling of just ultimate peace. And, you know, we just had ways of communicating with each other. And we were just like always on the same page. And she was very encouraging and always just knew what to say, when to say it, how to say it. And her faith in God was just amazing, absolutely amazing. Her whole life was a testimony on how she always loved people, always had something nice to say, always was able to help people, no matter what it was. She knew how to help you. She always cared. She always prayed for you or with you. She wasn't negative, always positive. Just such a tremendous person, you know. I, I cry for her often, but it's not because I, I'm feeling lost or, you know, overwhelmed with her not being here. It's just I miss her. I miss her terribly. And I'm sure I will for a long time. But I do know she's in heaven without a doubt. And I know she's a happy bear. I know that without a doubt. She talked a lot about her father. I knew she was a daddy's girl. She missed him terribly. And I know she's with him now. And I can just picture how happy she is. Her service was beautiful today. I thought it was great how so many people all felt like she was their best friend because that's how she made you feel. And she's got beautiful children, a great husband. I know they're gonna carry on in her name and do wonderful and great things. I'm so proud of all of them and so happy for them that they had such a beautiful role model and mother. It was hard leaving the service today. You know, for a minute there, I, I felt horrible leaving my friend there. It was so cold and I didn't like her being outside. But I do realize that her body is just, you know, part of this earth, you know, and one day it'll be in heaven. But for now, she's there and it's warm and it's beautiful. And I'm just gonna really, really miss her. So if I'm really quiet tonight or just kind of out of character, I hope you'll forgive me because this is just really hard, you know, dealing with such a wonderful friend not here anymore. And I'm just really, really missing her. So thank you for all your support and prayers and just know that she was just an amazing woman. I really wish everybody could've gotten to know her the way I did. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Akas. Trustee La French?
I just want to say that my heart goes out to her family, her children, her husband. I am grateful for the opportunities and the times that we shared during our retreat when we were in Palm Springs. There was a lot of laughter, getting to know her more intimate, being able to listen, you know, to her views. She was a very, you know, sweet lady. She did so much for the community, for women, for low-income women, to hear people speak of her today. It was so heartwarming to me to hear the things that she has done and the obstacles that she has overcome. I'm saddened by her leaving. I'm saddened for her children and for her husband. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee La French. Two weeks ago, when we met, well, it feel like two weeks ago, it could've been longer. No one would've known that we would've lost one of us. And it's so sad, but God doesn't make mistakes. And I just have to continuously think about that. Amy and I were really close when she got on the board her first year. You know, I, I walked her through what she needed to do to be successful, a successful board member, her training, her, the different workshops. And she was so eager to learn. And I didn't know how busy she was. I knew that she had her nonprofit, but I, I didn't know how busy, just how busy she was until later. And I know that when she was sick with COVID, you know, I think she stepped away from her business in order to heal. I was just looking over some text messages that we had going back and forth when she got sick last year. When she was in the hospital. We didn't know initially that she was in the hospital. But she recovered. She recovered and she got strong. It took some time. You know, and looking back, we didn't know the severity of how sick she really was. She never complained about it. She just kept moving. We would hear her cough. And, you know, she just never complained about anything. She, she was positive in everything that she said. And I just, I send out my condolences to her family, her children. Her, her extended family, because she took on, you know, her, some of her brother's children and brought them into her household and took care of them. And she was really passionate and loving. Aunt turned mother because she did adopt these children. We're gonna miss her, gonna miss her tremendously. And I just wanna say that whatever the board could do for the family, the district, please let us know. And you will always be remembered. She will always be remembered as serving this district for three years. Three years. And I just want to say, may she rest in peace. And you're right, Holly, you know, God knew that he needed her now, you know, and will be okay because he doesn't make mistakes.
Right.
So with that being said, I'll call for the vote to approve the resolution. And there will be a service for Trustee Hunter on Thursday at three o'clock. Dr. Mitchell will give more information on that during his, his superintendent comments, but it will be at the Adalanto Stadium. And I'll just leave it at that. So, Mrs. Leve, could you call for the vote?
Yes. Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass five zero. I just wanna read this. And I read this, I found this poem and it's "Let the Tears Flow." What is it about tears that we're afraid of? Is it human to cry? Cry helps sugar heal. Cry with friends, family, and alone. Don't be surprised when grief freight train run over you. Just be in the moment and it will pass. Struggle through your emotions and you will find relief as your reward. And I, and I, and I felt that for you, Trustee Akas, because I know that, you know, recently you and Trustee Hunter became very close. And I know that you're a very emotional person, so am I. I try not to cry, but sometimes I can't help it. But I wanted to let you hear that.
Thank you.
Moving on to section four, annual organization, election of officers and voting representatives for the annual October meeting of school representatives. Our first office will be president. We need a nomination for president. I'll start, I nominate. Go ahead, Trustee La French.
I nominate Trustee Christina Benz for president.
A second to a nomination. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. The next nomination would be for clerk. I need a nomination for clerk.
I nominate Christine Turner for board clerk.
I have a nominee, a motion by Christina Benz, is there a second?
A second, Trustee La French.
And a second by Trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. Voting representative for annual October meeting of school representatives. I need a motion. I nominate, I nominate Trustee La French. I need a second.
Benz, I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to four point oh two, annual organization recognizing outgoing officers and welcoming new elected officers. At this time, we're going to recognize outgoing officers. Okay, I know this is really hard to do on Zoom, but I would like to still say that it was a pleasure serving as your board president. I know it was difficult being online, but I am happy that we had more participants able to join our meetings. Again, you know, since we've been quarantined and meeting in Zoom over the past two years, we have never had an audience. Right now it's seventy-four, I'm looking at. Generally, just get a few people in, mainly staff and teachers or someone that's being recognized or, for whatever reason. So even though this is not the way that we really wanna do it during this pandemic, it's something that we believe is safe for our community and our staff. And one day we will return to open session with our kids so we can have a celebration for our children and see our faces of our teachers and staff. So again, it was my pleasure serving as your president for the past twelve months. And I know that I'm turning over the gravel to Trustee Benz. And she's gonna be, she's gonna do a phenomenal job. She's already started. She's good at keeping order and keeping things moving. So congratulations, Trustee Benz.
Thank you.
Trustee La French?
Congratulations, Trustee Benz. I know that you will keep us, you know, laughing and you will keep order. You may sing a tune or two, you know, and I'm looking forward to you being our new board president. Ms. Turner, I wanna thank you for the twelve months that you have taken us and taught us and, you know, showed us how things are supposed to run. I wanna thank you for, you know, inviting me, you know, as the clerk into setting the agenda. I have learned so much. I appreciate all that you do for A E S D. I appreciate your feistiness. I appreciate your information. I appreciate that you do not back down on what you believe in. You being voted in for another term, you know. I always wanna tell you that that's what the people want. And I appreciate all you do and all that you take when it comes to the pressure that is put on you. And I appreciate you for showing your leadership, giving us your guidance in the last twelve months. And before then, I appreciate you and I thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Benz?
You know, I was sitting here thinking that Amy would be happy. I guess that's why I'm upset, because she's not here. Because I know she'd be cheered. So I think now more than ever, you know, we need to work as a team and that's what my goal will be. Trustee Turner, Turner, thank you for your attention to detail. You know, you, you spot things and then I'm like, man, I missed that. You know, you see it. And I respect the time you've had on the board and I respect your attention to detail and I respect your tenacity. And so you've raised the bar high. Thanks a lot. So, you know, I strive to, to do the same so that our, our district can get to, to where it needs to be, you know. And I won't take this lightly and I will, you know, be vigilant. And I just, I wanna say thank you all.
Thank you, Trustee Benz. Trustee Akas? Yes?
I'm sorry, I'd like to make comments after your, after the board, thank you.
Trustee Akas?
Yeah, I just wanna make a general statement tonight because I just can't think, my head just really hurts. I'd like to thank the board for being very supportive to me this evening at the funeral. I really appreciated that, it meant a lot to me. And I, I don't know what else to say, you guys. It's really hard for me to think right now, but thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Akas. Trustee, Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. Also, Madam President, I wanted to say thank you for your service as president this year. This is a tough year to be president of the board. It's always a tough job, but the pressures that we were under this year navigating COVID and navigating online and trying to get this work, this incredibly important work done online, one hundred percent was tough. I want to also personally thank you because I have grown tremendously under your leadership. And so I just wanna thank you for pushing me and questioning and helping me and just shaping me into a better superintendent. And I know that I'm better today than I was when I started. And I attribute a lot of that to you, so thanks so much for your service. Also wanna thank you too, Trustee La French, for your services clerk this past year, all those signatures and signings. And it's just been a tough year and so thank you for your leadership and your service to the board too. Trustee Turner, I do have a really beautiful plaque. I'm afraid that I left it in my trunk because it was raining. So I will grab it while we're on a break or something because it's, it's not raining now. And so I wanna be fully close and I wanna show that publicly, a beautiful plaque, as well as a gift for incoming president, Trustee Benz. So, so if we were in person, this would have much more pompous circumstance, but also considering today's event and Trustee Hunter. It's just really hard to be so, celebrate it way right now, but I wanted to let you know how you, how you've improved my, my practice and I sincerely appreciate that. Thank you, thank you all for all of your service and you too, Trustee Akas, and Trustee Benz, for, for the service that you provide this year. It's been incomparable and it's been essential to keeping our district afloat and not only just afloat and surviving, but also thriving, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
And I just wanna thank everyone for your kind comments, your warm comments, it really mean a lot to me. And I will never forget them. And we have more time, we have a lot of work to do and I know that we will get it done. And Trustee La French, again, thank you. The, the role of the clerk is really important, even though you don't hear much about the clerk. The clerk is responsible for signing all the documents and they're held accountable for that signature. And so it's very important that the clerk understand what they're signing. And I know that Trustee La French, she take her time, she don't embark on anything until she have time to sit there and review everything. And then she signs. You know, we have many conversations and, and I just wanna thank you. I wanna thank our team. We're, we're down one, one man down, but, you know, I know that she's looking over us and I supposed to be there tonight, but I'll get them through it, you know. And I just wanna tell Exenia, our, our behind-the-scenes person that's sitting there documenting everything, thank you for what you do. And thank you for being available to me whenever I call you. And work until we get it right. You're such a pleasant person and, you know, and I know your job is hard too, dealing with all of us, the, the, just the business of the district on a regular basis. Dealing with all of us, the, the, just the business of the district on a regular basis. So I just want to say thank you. And thank you to cabinet. Um, for another year. Uh, and so I asked, this is the time where we trade places with the new incoming president, but trustee Benz asked me to continue the meeting tonight and she'll take over at the next board meeting. So I will uh, take over. I'll be president until the end. I'll be acting president until the end of this meeting because we have a new president. But I'll just manage the meeting until we get done, until it's over. Um, now we're moving on to four point oh three appointment, appointment of the superintendent as secretary to the board. Can I get a motion?
Ben, I mo- motion to, to.
I have a motion by trustee Benz, a second.
Trustee La French, I second.
And a second by trustee La French, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben, say.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I motion pass four zero. Moving on to section five, closed session, we'll be taking items five point oh two and five point oh three into closed session. Um, I know that we promised that we will hold closed session at the end because of trustee public comment period, but we had to handle this business before going into closed session tonight. We will be having a second closed session. It'd be a more lengthy closed session. But right now we really need to, we have attorneys um, waiting on a few cases, two cases actually. And um, we have some um, discipline, dismissal, release and appointment and reassignment issues that we need to address because they're located on the concern agenda. So with that being said, um, I'll move to section six, public testimony before closed session. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any speaker request forms? For closed session items only?
Uh, Madam President, we do not.
Okay, um, is there a representative from ADTA or CSEA who would like to address the board? None?
There are no comments for closed session.
Okay, so we'll move on to section seven, recessed to closed session. Uh, can I get a motion?
Uh, Ben, I mo- motion.
I have a motion by trustee Benz, a second, but with trustee La French?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben, say.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I motion pass four zero. The time is six oh three, we're in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, I see everyone. I don't see.
See everyone.
Trustee Eckes. Oh, I see her. Trustee Eckes, can you hear me?
Michael, does she have access?
Yes, ma'am. She's a co-host, so she should be able to unmute herself.
Okay.
Hey, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you. We can hear you now.
Okay, on the computer or on my phone?
Your phone. That's your phone.
Yeah. Okay, so you don't hear me on the computer?
Yes, I hear, hear her on the, the computer. That's her computer thing. That's.
We're on the computer, yes. Your phone is currently muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just turned off my phone. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so everyone else is here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, we're moving on to section A reconvene, open meeting, call to order. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's present.
Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present. We have a form. The time is seven forty-three PM. Section nine, closed session report, announcements of reportable actions taken during closed session. There were none. Moving on to section ten, the public testimony, uh, public comment period for open session. Okay, um. Public comment period for items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items within the subject manager jurisdiction of a governing board. Public comment period is administered by state law and is appointed a meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting law do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. To help well-being and public safety of community members, public officials and employees, it's a top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Consistent with shelter in place orders from the governor and San Bernardino County, or members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. The meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order AB three sixty-one, which will provide local legislative bodies with the continued flexibility to meet remotely without adhering to all the Brown Act teleconference rules during a proclaimed state of emergency. But the following key limitations, one, public comments must be allowed in real time. Two, if there are technological issues, the meeting must be stopped and no vote or other official actions can be taken until the public can once again participate in the proceedings. Any person who wish to address the governing board on open session, agenda and non-agenda items must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session item. The board limit the total time for public comment on each item to um, in the past it would be twenty minutes, but because of the issues that we're facing right now, we will allow one hour. The, with board consent, the president may increase or decrease the allotted time for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may ask if additional items. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any request forms?
Uh, yes, and, and Madam President, I want to remind you of the Snowline public comment.
Exactly. So I will be making those um. I was gonna make those during public uh, during trustee area comments because it came from board president of Snowline. So I'll wait until we get to the trustee area.
Okay, great, thank you. So the board, the, the board welcomes uh, Lynette Cadilly representing ADTA.
Good evening, everyone, trustees, cabinet and all in attendance. We are saddened of the passing of Amy Hines. It was so sudden. And we couldn't believe it. Condolences to her husband, children, the family and all of her friends. She was a very kind and genuine person and did a lot for our community. Whenever faced with rudeness or adversity, she always maintained a classy and professional demeanor. You will be missed, Amy. It's very strange to sit here in the board meeting without her. Our certificated staff and our students are looking forward to the upcoming winter break. The word break has much more meaning this year as we all need a mental, emotional and physical break. It seems extra important to spend time with family and friends this year. We have an upcoming PD in January. I can't recall ever having one in January before. So I hope we get, we have a great turnout being that it is immediately after the New Year celebrations. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but we are seeing um, a lot of negative classroom behaviors. The increase is in most schools and at all levels. We need more support to deal with these behaviors and not to be ignored or dismissed. We love our parents and most are very supportive, but there is an increasing trend to um, or some of our parents lashing out at teachers with verbally abusive language and threats. Times are stressful for families and we understand this, but we are also seeing droves of teachers leaving the profession across our state and our nation because of the treatment teachers are experiencing. That coupled with the behavior of students is becoming overwhelming. This brings me to the issue we have in our own district. Teachers that have been loyal and dedicated to our district have left because of their admin um, treating them of the way that their admin has been treating them. These are awesome teachers who had passion for our students and district, but now have gone because there's only so much one can take. Something needs to be done to help stress teachers, stress students and stress parents. There are numerous open positions right now being filled by subs, but desperately need to be filled by certificated teachers. Why is it okay for these students to get less of an education with rotating subs than it is for our other students? Mr. Kraus is going to show you a presentation that calls for layoffs. His number is the exact same as it was last year, which, which boggles my mind because knowing this information last year, we informed our members, especially our non-tenured members, that if they had opportunities, they should go for them before these layoffs occur. The number that was told to us was about twenty-five. We had a lot of teachers that retired last year as well. So with the many teachers that left and with the number of retired teachers, my question is how and why is the projected number the same? I hope you can answer this, uh, this Thursday during our negotiations. Moving on to a few more questions I have. Um, what are the plans for the new middle school time changes that must occur starting next year, especially with busing? What is the plan and how are we going to handle the increasing number of students going on independent study? You know, we will have more to come when the mandate for the vaccine comes down for our students. We really need to stop being reactive and as a, as a district and be proactive. Thank you all for listening and have a great break.
Thank you, Ms. Cadilly. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, the board welcomes Diane Lynn, president of CSEA. Ms. Lynn, please unmute yourself. Ms. Lynn, are you on? Oh, there you go.
Uh, good evening, President Turner, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet, CSEA staff, ADTA staff and all others attending this meeting. Uh, CSEA would also offer our condolences for trustee Hunter. Um, it was very sad news for us to find out what had happened. Our hearts go out to um, her husband and children and family. Um, I am happy and proud to report that at our last chapter meeting, uh, we approved a five hundred dollar donation for our ARCRC. And Mrs. Davis was very happy to receive that. I also would like to report that we had a nice CSDA Christmas party this last Saturday. Uh, it was at the fairgrounds, uh, at the Alaska building. What was nice about it, it, it was a bigger venue than we usually have and we were able to spread out because of the footage. Uh, we had great food, music, photo booth and prizes galore. Uh, we also had a fifty fifty. Uh, and um, I'm happy to say that our clerk at George, Patsy Padilla, uh, won three hundred twenty-five dollars. And the other half uh, was also given to ACRC. So we are very happy and proud to be able to give back to our Adelanto community. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you. You're on mute. Trustee Turner.
I'm sorry, here I am just talking. Um, do we have any audience members that would like to address the board?
Yes, Madam President, the board welcomes Esmeralda Lopez. Uh, unmute yourself. Thank you. Esmeralda Lopez.
Dr. Mitchell, I don't see an Esmeralda Lopez in the chat. I only see a Diana Esmeralda.
I think that's her. No, that's not her.
Hello.
Yes.
Thank you. This is Diana Esmeralda. Um, it's a pleasure to be in front of the trustees tonight. And I would like to express my um, condolences to the trustees and to the AESD system. I am so, Amy just lived down the street from me and um, I was, I thought she was a really awesome trustee and it was amazing to watch her journey and to watch her grow. And to see her achieve all of the things that she did and I, I'm just really happy that I was able to witness um, such grace in politics. Um, also, I would like to speak tonight on, um, there's a two hundred unit apartment complex going up on Verbena and Palmdale. And I think that the trustees should know about it. That's gonna be like four hundred more kids, you know? Um, so they're building a lot of homes here in Adelanto and I kind of am concerned about the burden that it brings onto our school system and um, I just, you know, especially with the comments made from before from the um, the unions and stuff, I'm just worried about what the burden is and if the trustees know that there are so many homes being built, you know, and this new apartment complex that the residents are definitely against. So um, the, I put out a poll to the residents and um, a hundred and five people responded and eighty-five of those people are saying no to this apartment complex. So those are the children going to school in your neighborhood, in your schools. They're the parents coming to, you know, your school system and um, they're saying no to this and I just, it might be something that is stressing out our community. We don't have a lot of infrastructure. So one of my suggestions too is um, school gardens. We have a lot of space at the schools. We already have the water, you know, for the grass and things and. water, you know, for the grass and things and creating school garden projects at each of the schools would just be amazing. It helps alleviate depression. It brings micronutrients into the body through the skin. And I just believe that it might be something that would be helpful. It it teaches science and math and things like that also. Bellflower and Mojave is, I watch the kids, you know, sometimes when I'm out and about trying to walk through there and it really needs to be addressed. I'm sorry, say again.
You have fifteen seconds.
I didn't hear that. So please put your attention towards the safety of the children at Bellflower and Mojave. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you. The board recognizes Andres Ochoa. Please unmute yourself. There you go. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, parents and staff. I want to start off with saying that I would have preferred Holly Hex for our board president. We want people that are going to stand up for us and for the community when something is not right for us and not hide behind screens and follow exactly what our last board president was doing. We are here because we want our our district to do what's best for our children, not listen to the unnecessary mandates that are being enforced on our children. A vaccine is not going to keep my child healthy, exercise and eating healthy will not. And I'm not talking about the trash food that they give our children at schools. If you really care for our kids, why is it that they are always struggling for water? Since now they are not able to use a water fountain at that school. Me and my wife constantly donate water bottles at the school and they are still struggling every other week for water. It is ridiculous and if this continues to um to happen, I am a truck driver. I have my business and I will move my business out of state, anywhere else. I will take it to another county. I will take my children to another school district that actually care for the well-being of my children and for their future. And not to 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 listen to whatever mandate that our our government wants to place on us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The board welcomes Jennifer Rader. That's right, unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Good evening. I'd like to talk about our district's response to the current health crisis. We are met with a new variant of the COVID nineteen illness. The CDC says the Omicron symptoms are mild. The World Health Organization reports no deaths from Omicron. Officials in Ohio and Rhode Island find that even though Omicron is found in twenty-nine states, it's mostly found among the vaccinated, eighty percent per CDC. If this were about immunity, natural immunity would be considered. It's believed to be thirteen times less likely for people with natural immunity to contract COVID compared with unvaccinated people. And now doctors are saying that natural immunity is far longer lasting than the vaccinations. There are now one point seven million serious adverse side effects, including death from the vaccine and boosters, including sudden cardiac arrest among otherwise healthy individuals, and even those numbers are underreported. The Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled Biden's mandates and OSHA's mandates unconstitutional for all fifty states. Yes, including California. So why is this district holding to the mandates of the governor? Other districts are not, so don't say your hands are tied. And if mandating the vaccine is unconstitutional, then why are we testing healthy people weekly? This unnecessary overtesting wastes the resources for people who are actually sick. The tests are not free. Someone pays and it's the government. How do they pay? With our tax dollars. So we pay for these free vaccines and free tests and drug company stocks have skyrocketed forty-five percent over the past year. I'll give you one guess who owns those stocks. Ding ding ding. If you guessed members of our Congress, you're a winner. Our district now has two healthy teachers out on unpaid leave with substitutes in their classes for weeks now. The religious exemption that was granted to our teachers did not extend to weekly testing and many of us are complying under duress. By what authority can HR and risk management determine which deeply held personal beliefs are and are not reasonable? While we all worked since August without vaccinating or testing, what is the sudden threat that changed things in November? Suddenly, it's a risk to have us teaching untested. We are not expecting any special accommodations. We just want to work as usual. This costs the district nothing. The district bears no hardship meeting our reasonable accommodation. I personally resent having to test weekly when I am healthier than most, being COVID recovered. I think the board needs to get their hands out of politics and out of medicine and go back to the venue of education where your only authority lies. We need our board to keep eyes on the ball, our kids' academic needs. Let teachers and parents manage our own health as we see fit. It's not your job. You're not our doctors. Stay focused on what you can control, which is this district's budget and curricula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rader. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, we have our final speaker, Madam President, and the board welcomes Kristen Rodriguez. That's Rodriguez. There you are. Good evening and welcome. You are on mute.
First, I want to offer my deepest condolences to all of you regarding Ms. Hunter. But I feel today with, I I feel today that it was a mistake not to choose Eckes as president because the public feel that Eckes is the only one that is willing to stand up for our parental rights and for our children. Also, I know that you guys keep saying that your hands are tied and there's nothing you can do about the mandate, but clearly that there is something you could do because other districts are doing it. And if you guys won't fight for the fight against the mandate for us, then I'm going to continue fighting alongside of several other parents and teachers to get this vaccine away from our children that do not need it. It's completely unnecessary. And while having a healthy teacher on leave, my my student or my kid has been getting bounced from sub to sub and honestly, I'm really disappointed in the way this was handled because when they came back from Thanksgiving break, you guys already should have had a sub lined up and they didn't. So Monday, when their first day with the sub, first day without their teacher, they were sent to other classrooms. And several of the students that were supposed to be in my child's classroom that were split to another classroom almost got put on the butts that do not belong on the butts. So that's like a real safety concern. I know a couple of students that don't even want to go back to school because they feel like they're never going to come home again. Because they're worried that they're gonna get stuck on the bus. So they need a long-term sub and having them jump from substitute to substitute is unacceptable. Having them split into other classrooms where a lot of them don't feel safe is unacceptable. And you guys should have had a sub lined up, knowing that that was gonna happen after Thanksgiving break. So several of the parents in the class are very upset by it. Students are upset by it and we feel like we are really like the ball was dropped on that. So thank you. And that's me, it for me. Thanks. Oh, shoot, what did I just do? Sorry, I'm trying to turn off my everything.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Mitchell, has any more comment?
Madam President, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to section eleven, governing board members' reports and announcements. Before I do that, I would like to read, we got, read a notice from Marcus Hernandez, School Board President, Area Four of Snowline Joint Unified Union Unified School District. Dear Adelanto Elementary School Board of Trustees, I would like to give my condolences to you and your governance team and the entire Adelanto learning community on the recent passing of Board Trustee Amy Hunter. I was fortunate to befriend Amy during CSBA Masters in Governance Training in each of our first years of governance. Amy was a kind, giving and dedicated person to the community and I was fortunate to learn much of her during the next couple of years. We connected often and mutually enjoyed serving our district. In the loss of trustee Hunter, we all have lost. We all, we have all lost an advocate of learning. Please take care of each other and honor Amy in your thoughts and meaningful discussion you all make going forward. Respectfully yours, Marcus Hernandez, School Board President, Area Four Trustee, Snowline Joint Unified School District. Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez for that. That was very appreciative and very heartfelt. Okay, who would like to start? Justina French, would you like to go first? In your comments?
Really well, I'm gonna bypass my comments for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Benz, would you like to go next?
I have no, no comments for tonight.
Trustee Eckes?
Yes, I'm sorry. I know it's gonna take a minute or two, but I do have some comments. First of all, I want to apologize and I'm sorry my picture is not on Zoom tonight. I'm trying really hard to hold on to my signal for this meeting. Amy was so heavily on my mind and heart tonight. I miss her very much. Please know how much she loved this district and this community. Her prayers and faith will stay with us always. We were so blessed to have her in our lives. Please keep her family in your prayers and love each other more than ever. Again, I just want to add that I support all of you who are vaccinated, unvaccinated. I don't support any layoffs in this district, especially during the holiday season. I do believe religious and health exemptions should be accepted and honored. I believe in upholding my oath of office and protecting the Constitution and our freedoms of choice. God's in charge and I know that he will prevail in the end. I find my peace and guidance in him through prayer and my faith. I just want to thank you all so much for your support, your faith in me as your board member. And I'm just honored and humbled by your comments when you call in and you speak. It just, it really makes me happy just to hear your voices and hear you speak out and let us know how you feel about everything. That's, that's just why I'm here. I I love hearing that. I love hearing people getting involved and doing what they need to do to protect themselves, their children and their freedoms. So thank you for that. In closing, I just hope everyone has a beautiful and blessed Christmas and, you know, just enjoy your family and hug them because they're so special and time is so short. So just thank you. And again, I hope you have a wonderful Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Eckes, I will forego my comments for tonight. Today has been a very long day. I, what I would like to tell the family is our sincere condolences from the Board of Trustees and the entire Adelanto Elementary School District and community. And we've said that several times, but I can't say it enough. You know, we grieve your loss because it's a loss to us as well. So I will move on to section twelve, adoption of the minutes. Board minutes approved as written and order filed regular board meeting of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve?
I have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, trustee LaFrance?
My second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Benz?
Benz, I?
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Justina French?
LaFrance, I.
Mr. Turner?
Justina Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving to section thirteen, consent agenda. We are taking items thirteen oh two through thirteen twenty-nine. Does any trustees want to pull an item?
Trust trustee Ben Benz here. I'd like to pull I, item thirteen point twenty-one.
Are there any others? Okay. I need a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
I have a motion by trustee LaFrance. So a second.
Benz, I second?
Second by trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I? Trustee Eckes?
I.
Justina French?
LaFrance, I.
Mr. Turner?
Justina Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. For section fourteen, items removed from the consent. Thirteen oh one, certificated personnel administrative new hires. Dr. Mitchell, I will turn that over to you so you can announce.
Do we have to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion. I need a motion.
Benz, I I mo- motion to to approve thirteen point twenty-one.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second, LaFrance.
And a second by trustee LaFrance. Okay, now we're in discussion. Thank you for that, trustee Benz.
Learning.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. I'd like to welcome new hires to our management team. Rebecca Bakowski, Matthew Latong and Jacque Griffith. If you guys are still on, please. Can you, Michael, can you turn their screens on so we can kind of wave to the crowd? We want to welcome Rebecca Bakowski to to serve at Theodore Vic, Ted Vic. Matthew Latong will serve us at Eagle Ranch. Jacque Griffith will serve at Victoria McGath. And we want to welcome you all to the management team. We look forward to joining. This will certainly assist with some of the comments that our units are making about being tough and we've just been really down a lot of administrators and so we're looking forward to the great work that our new staff will bring. We're also proud of the fact that they're longtime Adelanto teachers. And so we bring a wealth of knowledge to our schools as well as to their fellow teachers and serving well as administrators. So thank you. And I don't know, Michael, were you able to get them on so I can give a wave to the crowd? Okay, there they are. There you go. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Can I, I will call for the, any trustees, would you like to make any comment? I'm sorry.
I I just want, want to say thank, thank you. And I'm real, really excited that we we have some long-term employees who want to stay and work up and help our dis- this district. So it's real, really exciting, exciting to see see that. So well, welcome.
Thank you. Trustee LaFrance, would you like to make any comments?
I'm gonna say welcome and thank you for, it was so nice to hear that, you know, each one, twenty-one years of service, twenty-one years of service. You know, that speaks volumes on your dedication to AESD. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, trustee LaFrance. Trustee Eckes?
Yes, it's an honor to have you in our district. I'm very proud, you know, to say that you're with us and we're moving forward and I'm, I'm very sorry about the circumstances tonight. I, I wish I could be more joyful, but I am glad you're here and I think it's wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Eckes. And I concur with my trustees. It's always nice to hear that we promote within and to have three, was it three, one, two, three? Yes, three. From within. That is awesome. I I can't begin to justify how proud I I, I, I can't begin to justify how proud I am and how happy I am to hear that we are giving our own an opportunity to serve. And grow in our district. Uh, what we did not do is, uh, pull thirteen twenty-seven classified management new hires. And I want to acknowledge them as well. We also hired, um, Veronica Alvarez as our CNS supervisor. Congratulations, um, Veronica. And Veronica is also a long.
We do have them listed in thirteen twenty-six if you want to.
They're in twen- they're on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
They're on the consent agenda. We didn't pull it.
Yeah, thirteen twenty-seven?
We didn't pull it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We did not pull it, so that's why, um, you know, it's been a hard day. So that's why I'm acknowledging them now. And also, um, um, our transportation, a new transportation supervisor, Rue Cast- Nada? Castorita?
Yes.
Castorita. So congratulations to all of our new hires. Um, the new, uh, we have one, uh, Rita Castor, Castorita.
Yeah.
I'm messing up her name. She was one, one on the outside, but, um, but listening to her experience. And her nurturing attitude for our children, she's gonna bring a tremendous amount of support. In our transportation department, training our bus drivers and looking out for our precious students. So congratulations to all of these appointments and welcome to A S, A E S D, thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, section.
President, can we take the vote now?
We gotta take the vote, gotta vote.
Uh, Kristi Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee LaFrance?
I.
Mr. Turner?
Turner, I motion pass four zero. Okay, moving on to section fifteen, staff reports and presentations, fifteen oh one, academic services. Williams uniform complaint procedures, a quarterly summary report for quarter one. For the first quarter, Dr. Mitchell, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll turn it over to Dr. DeWaison, thank you.
Yes, good evening, board trustees and cabinet. Um, so this is our, um, yearly, actually it's for first quarter, uh, Williams settlement legislation. Um, and basically out of the first quarter, which runs from July to September. Um, it notes that we had zero, um, complaints. So according to Williams, we need to make sure that we have an official complaint process on file, which is our uniform complaint procedures. And so for the, uh, four areas that can be filed, it falls under instructional materials, facilities. And then, uh, teacher vacancies and or misassignments. And so I'm happy to report from July to September, we had no complaints in those areas.
Thank you, Dr. DeWaison. Is this an action? No, this is just information only. Okay, thank you, Dr. DeWaison, we'll move on to fifteen oh two, academic services. Uh, William settlement annual report twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
So thank you, Madam President, and this is related, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. DeWaison, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, so this is just a annual notice, letting you know that, uh, for the year of twenty twenty-one, it's more of a compliance report. And so, um, it's just letting you know that every year Adelanto is one of many schools in the county that participates in the Williams inspections. And so they come out and look for instructional materials, they come out and look for facilities. Making sure that we're up to date in those areas. It also mentions and making sure that we have that universal complaint procedure, like I just mentioned in previous item. And so, um, just, uh, letting you know for the year twenty twenty-one, so a little, a little behind in how they reported. Um, but there were no deficiencies reported, uh, for the year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Dr. DeWaison. Trustees, do you have any questions regarding this information?
I do not.
And this is also informational, or do we have to vote on it?
No, all of these, uh, we're under staff reports and presentations and so, uh, all fifteen oh one through fifteen oh five are information for the board.
Okay, great. Um, and moving on to fifteen oh three, business services, presentation of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two first interim report. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, and so happy to turn it over to Mr. Kraus to present, uh, this year's first interim, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, good evening, members of the board, members of the community for the first interim presentation this evening. Uh, we have invited Mr. Matt Phillips with School Services of California to join us. Uh, his flight was delayed, but he should be landing anytime. He was going to bribe the pilot with some peanuts to fly faster so that he could get on the ground. But, uh, we hope that he will be able to join us in the next few minutes. Um, it's just a timing issue, but, uh, we're excited to have them, have him with us this evening. And then Mr. Carlos Moran will also be assisting me with the presentation this evening. So again, I'm excited to be here before you to talk about our first financial report of this fiscal year. The first interim talks about our revenues and expenditures that start July first and go to October thirty-first. And that's the point in time that the first interim report captures. How did we do on our revenues? How do we do on our expenditures? What are some of the assumptions we're using? And so here you can see the discussion topics that I'll be, uh, working on this evening. So highlights of the first interim. We'll talk about the enrollment and average daily attendance, right-size staffing to enrollment, uh, current budget assumptions, multi-year projections and some next steps. And so Mike, if you will, uh, move to the next slide. So as we look at our first interim, and by the way, I want to thank our fiscal staff, uh, director Zach Klemish, his team in the budget office and the accounting office. Uh, they've been very instrumental in assisting with preparing these reports as well, helping to, uh, work with the county as a liaison. County of San Bernardino, superintendent of schools, working with the state if they need any information and our auditors. And so you, I would be remiss if I did not thank them, uh, for all their hard work and helping to prepare this and, and, uh, working with us on this. So here we see some of the highlights of the first interim. So we have a positive certification. And what that means is that as a district, we're able to meet our obligations for the current year and out years. You have three types of certifications, positive is the top one. And so we're excited to be able to present a positive certification to the board and community this evening. Uh, the enrollment, you can see there, the numbers of seventy-eight, thirty-eight, and our average daily attendance of seventy-one, thirty-six are flat in our multi-year projections. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Uh, our revenues are higher in twenty-one, twenty-two due to recognizing federal ESER funds. There's been a lot of talk about the federal government supporting, uh, states and local municipal municipalities and school districts with COVID relief funds. So the ESER funds are part of that pot that we have been receiving. There's ESER one, two and three, and this has been an ongoing revenue stream one time. But ongoing as far as the, uh, pots of money for the next, uh, uh, year or so. And so, uh, we'll see that in a minute as well. And then the unrestricted ending fund balance decreases, as you can see there. And we'll see a slide on that, and I just wanted to touch on the difference between restricted and unrestricted when we get there. So, uh, hopefully it makes sense to everyone watching this evening. All right, Mike, can you, uh, turn to the next slide? So one of the things that we do in order to, uh, assess where we're at is look at our enrollment. Uh, how many students are actually on paper? So at any point in time, we can look into our system called Ares and see how many students are actually enrolled in the district. And once we do that, we use those numbers and then we look at how many are actually showing up then on any given day. And that's where you get your average daily attendance. And so when we look at those numbers, you can see the historical from nineteen twenty. And then, of course, we've had a, a interesting last year or so with COVID and attendance when we were on the, uh, on Zoom and, and distance learning. And now we came back to in-person learning this year. And so you can see for the adopted budget there in the middle, what our assumptions were. And then as we look at our first interim multi-year projection, where we currently are at. And so I know that the, uh, academic services team is aggressively working with our families to ensure that our students come to school every day. And what supports they may need to be able to do that because our, uh, average daily attendance, you see there at ninety-one percent is, is very low compared to the statewide average. Um, we want to be up at ninety-four, ninety-five, even ninety-six percent. And just for ballparking this evening, every percent increase in ADA we get is approximately another nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So if we went to ninety-two percent, another nine hundred thousand dollars, ninety-three percent, one point eight, uh, in additional revenue. So our goal is to really steadily work on that and increase, uh, our students coming to school. Because that does help our bottom line, but also we want students to be in school so they can learn. So very important that we monitor that as we move forward. Um, next slide. So here, uh, Mr. Moran, uh, our assistant superintendent of human resources is going to talk about this in a second, about right-sizing a district, looking at the staffing. And then looking at our enrollment. And this is one of the things that we want to make sure we're looking at. You may recall, uh, members of the board and community, we, our district had to do a third interim back in, uh, June this last summer. And what that meant is that a lot of districts don't have to do a third interim, but we had to because when we looked at our multi-year projections. It looked like our expenditures far outweighed our revenues. And one of the areas the county looks at is how is your staffing compared to your enrollment? And have you been able to, uh, right-size it? And so with that, I'm going to turn this slide over to Mr. Moran, who's just going to, uh, briefly talk about what is right-sizing.
All right, great, thank you, uh, Mr. Kraus. So in, in regards to right-sizing, uh, you know, the first thing I want to, uh, share right now is the, the numbers you see there are estimates. Uh, we're still working, uh, as Michael, uh, shared regarding attendance. That is a challenge for us because attendance, uh, numbers, enrollment numbers actually helps, uh, us, uh, staff appropriately, appropriately at all school sites. So these are, these are estimated numbers that you see on the screen. But in order to right-size district staffing, again, it leads, you know, it's tied in closely to enrollment. Um, you know, when you see the, the word, uh, RIF or reduction in force, it's an elimination or, or reduction of particular kinds of service. Uh, obviously that would lead to, uh, um, uh, layoffs. Um, and it's usually done, it's, is, it states there for budgetary reasons or if there's a decline in ADA, as Michael just mentioned. Or, or modification, for example, of, of curriculum, there's an elimination of, of a program, say a music program or something like that. Um, but again, our challenge, our challenge, uh, moving forward is, is one, we're, you know, we're still having the effects of the pandemic. Um, and that's, that's, um, um, presenting some challenges. We also have a high number of, of kids in ISP, uh, and, and that's presenting some challenges. And so as we look at estimated numbers, uh, working with student services and the projected enrollment. That's gonna help us really determine, you know, what, uh, uh, we're gonna consider for possible layoffs. So the numbers you see there for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is estimated at, at twenty-five. It could, uh, it could be less, it could be more. Again, it also depends on, uh, how many retirements we get at the, at the end of the year or resignations, uh, at the end of the year. And then that would help us, uh, determine also, uh, moving forward to fir- uh, future years, uh, the number of, of possible, uh, layoffs. But again, a lot of the right sizing of the district is really tied into, to enrollment. And, and, you know, um, as many of, uh, of, of us know that, you know, we need a reconciling enrollment. Uh, there has been a drip in, in enrollment over the past five years, so we're looking at that. Um, again, effects from the pandemic and then also new housing. So we have to kind of balance all of that as, as we look into, to appropriate staffing. And so our work in the next, uh, a couple of months is really looking, working hard with academic services. And enrollment center, uh, to look at enrollment numbers to help HR, uh, staff appropriately at each of our school sites.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moran. And just to piggyback on, on what Mr. Moran was stating, we are monitoring our housing stock. Uh, someone earlier in this, uh, board meeting mentioned the, um, apartments going up. I will, I took note of that as well because we want to make sure that we're taking that into account. What we're currently seeing though is there's not a lot of, um, families with children at this time buying these homes. That, that may change in the future, but we do take that into account as well as looking at our enrollment increase. And we're optimistic that hopefully at some point, um, those numbers will increase as we move forward. Mike, for the next slide, if you will. So here's some current budget assumptions as of, uh, today that we are using in our first interim. And again, this is a snapshot, I want to remind everybody, as Mr. Moran stated, these are estimates, these are snapshots, they're subject to change. And so with the governor coming out in January with a new budget proposal, it could turn everything upside down, we don't know yet. But this is where we're at today. So you see the cost of living adjustment, we received the COLA, uh, for this year, and then the out years projected. We see the percentage of the, uh, STIRS and PERS retirement system that the district has to pay into, uh, to support, uh, our retired members. Um, we have our lottery estimates that we receive per ADA, so that's a set dollar amount per ADA that we receive. We have our enrollment, our ADA, and then we look at our, our FTE. And as you saw on the prior slide, uh, if we go that route through whatever, uh, reasons that we may have to or may not to. This is where, when we look, talk with our county, when we talk with our, our internal staff, where our, uh, hope is to be, uh, depending on that enrollment number. So you see the FTE currently, uh, there, and that is not all inclusive because we have itinerant staff, we have other staff that are not in that three forty-eight. But this is just the classroom teachers that we have full-time that are in that number. So, um, I just wanted to make, point that out for the, the, um, meeting this evening. And then you see as we reduce potentially twenty-five each year, that's how we get to, uh, the two ninety-eight and twenty-three, twenty-four. The other thing I want to point out on this is that we have that ESER funds, you might have heard me talk about a minute ago, the COVID funds. Uh, we have several expenditures in our district that we're supporting ESER funds with. They're one-time money, they do have a sunshine date, um, in twenty-three, twenty-four. And so we will not be getting them ongoing, but currently we're able to use those to support our operations, uh, including FTE and including, uh, expenditures in the classroom. That is assisting us with maintaining our current operations. And so as we look to the future though, and when that ESER funds, those ESER funds go away, we want to make sure that, again, we're right-sizing our staffing. Because again, for every, um, uh, dollar that we lose, we have to make up for it somewhere, uh, in that ESER funding. And so with that, Mike, if you'll turn it to the next slide. So here we see our unrestricted fun, uh, ending fund balance. The unrestricted ending fund balance is the money that we receive that's unrestricted. Basically, the state says, here you go, this is to pay most of your operations with. And you can see there for twenty twenty-one, our total revenues, our total expenditures. And then we have a surplus of four point one million. We have a beginning fund balance and then we have an ending fund balance. So you see there the beginning ending fund balance in line four and five. And then you can see that for the multi-year projection, uh, that we show currently. And again, these numbers will change depending on the circumstances. But as of right now, here's what our estimates are. And so with that, Mike, if you can turn it to the next slide. Here's the breakdown, because when we talk about ending fund balance, there are several components of the ending fund balance. It's not just twenty-two million, uh, unrestricted that we can use for anything. There's a certain purpose for a lot of that. And as you can see here, we wanted to break it down just to show everyone revolving cash is mandated, we have to have that, we have to have stores. Uh, we have electric bus grant that we're hoping to get, and that would be about a hundred thousand dollar contribution from the district. Uh, we have textbook adoptions coming up, and I know that, uh, Dr. DeWaisen and her team are actively working on our textbook adoptions in the future. So we want to set money aside because I didn't realize how expensive textbooks have gotten. I don't know if you've checked them out lately, but wow, they're expensive. And so, um, we want to put money aside for that. We also have our reserve for une- or economic uncertainties, as you can see there, it's generally three percent by law. But what we wanted to do is add a cushion in there, a little bit of a cushion, uh, for each of those three years. And so it's a little over three percent. And I know it's a little hard to see, but it says, uh, four point three percent in this current year, four point five percent and four point five percent as you look in the out years. As far as that, uh, reserve for economic uncertainties. Now, the last line is the unassigned, and this is where you look at it. And this is the money out of the ending fund balance that's not assigned to any category. So as you look at that, as you look at the thirteen point seven million, you go across and we end at twelve point three million. That is where we end up, uh, currently, based on these numbers for first interim, uh, we could be at a twenty-three, twenty-four. And with that, Mike, the next slide, so here's our restricted ending fund balance. Now you may ask, why is that different? Well, the, all of the federal funds and grants and categoricals are in restricted monies. So all of our ESER funds, and we received millions. And I'm talking twenty-four, thirty-eight million, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was a massive amount of ESER funds that are in that, uh, revenue projections you can see there. And so then you see the expenditures, um, that we have, then this includes all of our categoricals, title one funding, title two, title three. Uh, all of our special education federal funding, any grants that the district has received, we received several, we, we've been fortunate to receive several grants over the last several years in the millions of dollars. Uh, for various restricted programs. And so that's all included in here. Then you see the beginning fund balance and then the ending fund balance as you move across. And the goal, of course, is to spend that money, uh, as we dedicate these dollars to various programs. And I know Dr. DeWaisen, and again, I have to, um, thank her and her team for helping our team, um, work on the plans for this, the reporting for this. helping our team, um, work on the plans for this, the reporting for this, and to have those plans that many have come before the board and will continue to come before the board for approval on the restricted programs. And so, um, that's talks about that. And then here we have the combined. And so the reason I wanted to break it out, because when you look at the combined, it looks like a lot of money, but it's the combined funding that makes it that high. So again, I want to show you the breakdowns on the earlier slides. But you can see there, the combined total revenues, 144, majority of that is ESER funding coming in. And then it goes back down to normal. So as a district, our average budget is around a hundred and 102 million dollars. That's just the way it's always been, basically right around there. Uh, so our total revenues go back down to normal when we take out the ESER funding. But you see, we're trying to spend it in the expenditures column, so we're spending that money. A lot of it's the restricted funds that we're trying to spend down so that we don't get a penalty for not spending it. We don't want to say to the state, hey, we didn't spend it all. We want to say we spent more than what you gave us. They like to see that. We like to see that. Um, and then you see the excess deficit there. Beginning fund balance overall, and then the ending fund balance overall on that. And so with that, Mike, if you'll turn it to the next slide. Here's some of the next steps that are coming up. And so we have the update on the governor's proposed 22, 23 budget. And I will tell you, uh, preliminary reports are that the state of California has a 31 billion with a B surplus. So we're excited because we believe that hopefully some of that potentially will go towards education. Um, is Mr. Phillips, was he able to join us, uh, Mike, Mr. Suma? Do you know if, uh, Mr. Phillips was able to join us yet?
In one moment to look for him.
Okay. Uh, as he's looking, I just wanted to say he has a little bit more inside information. He works with School Services of California based out of Sacramento. And he gets all of the inside information up there, uh, preliminary first, uh, which is great. Um, we also have the second interim presentation coming up in March, 2022. We have then in May, again, the cycle continues with the update on the governors may revise. And then we have the adoption of the LCAP and the budget for 22, 23 and the multi-year projections. And so that is where we're looking at as far as the next steps are concerned as we move forward. And with that, that concludes my presentation of first interim this evening. Thank you very much, members of the board. I'll take any questions the members may have.
You're on mute, um, Mr.
Justis, do you have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Very clear, very self-explanatory.
Let me see. Yes, I've got a question. So, um, it was brought, brought up that, that the RIFs that you are es- estimating 20, 25 cer- certif- tificated am- employed employees. But again, that, that's just the, the estimate. And as, you know, we've had three te- teachers today who now will be, you know, in man, management that will bring that down, right?
Mr. Kraus, let me take that. Um, so we, so those, so so reduction means that you actually eliminate those positions. And so now that those administrators move from a teaching position to an administrative position, we would backfill those teaching positions. But what's important to note about the right sizing of the district is that we currently are funding 50 of our current classroom teachers out of ESER funds. ESER allows us to, to, uh, pay for teachers that are over the amount that we should have. So what we're saying is based upon our enrollment and based upon our, uh, our ADA is that we should have 50 less teachers. And so what we've done is take 50 teachers so that we didn't have to do layoffs this year. And last year, we took 50 teachers and paid for them out of ESER. ESER will close at the end of 23, 24. And so that's why we want to begin to right-size the district because we need to make sure that we don't hire more teachers than we have enrollment for. Now, there are things that'll mitigate that, like, like resignations and retirements as well as, uh, funding, uh, positions out of categorical programs. So as you know, we will soon begin hiring teachers to serve as coaches. Those teachers would then be paid out of different fund, which would then mitigate and lower the amount of teachers that we would need to right-size. The other thing that we are hopeful for is, uh, the housing actually produces kids. Unfortunately, like Mr. Kraus was saying, each house doesn't necessarily produce a school-aged child. Um, we do have a lot of folks retiring in this area and, and downsizing from LA and from some downhill. And so the folks are retiring and say, hey, we'll need these huge houses or kids are gone and then, uh, buying houses up in the desert. That, 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 that doesn't necessarily add kids to us. And so uh, you're, you're on the right track there, Mrs. Vince, that we should, is we should, if we hired three administrators, theoretically, we should have three less teachers, but we don't, remember those, those teachers, those administrators all have a class right now, so we would backfill that class through this year. Now, as we go into next year and we actually reduce the total number of teachers we have, those classes wouldn't exist. We would, we would put, we, we would, we would fill classes up to the class size maximum based upon the collective bargaining. So if you're supposed to have 24 kids in the first grade, we'd make sure that you have 24 kids and so on and so.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions, Justis? Okay. I, I, I do have a question. You mentioned that California had, uh, 31 billion surplus. So that's the case. Um, and these are, how would that affect our, our, a multi-year projection? If we get more money? We don't know that until we, um, go to the budget workshop. But do you feel that if the district has funded more money, do we still need to cut these employees?
Mr. Kraus or Mr. Moran, I can certainly answer that, but go ahead.
Uh, thank you for your question, Trustee Turner. We do anticipate money coming back to the district. But at some point, if it's not ongoing, which we don't anticipate it is because the governor likes to give out just one-time funding, this current governor, um, it will affect us in the out-years at some point if we don't start right sizing the district now. And those numbers could be smaller if we get more money, um, in January, and then that might be able to allow us to, uh, move out the right sizing process so that it's not as much this year, a little bit this year, a little bit next year till we eventually get there. Um, that could give us some leeway, uh, depending on what the governor proposes. Absolutely.
Okay, my next question is, as you can, we're hearing and we're saying that, um, they're filling every empty lot in the high desert with homes, not just these are large homes. You mentioned that there are no school-aged children. But I find that ironic, you know, do we know for sure that these homes are not producing children? Or are they sending their children to another district? Do you know that?
No, I didn't say.
Inter-district transfers? How are they coming in?
Yeah, so I didn't say they, they didn't produce no children, but I, but I said that not necessarily how every house produces a child. But certainly we, we're looking at inter-district transfers and chartering enrollment. So we don't have those numbers in front of us, but that's all part of our analysis.
Are we, we beefing up our marketing efforts to bring in more students to our district?
Absolutely. And plus, we also are going to Universal TK, so that was, we, uh, we also will, will gain students because of, we're getting four-year-olds now. And four-year-olds will also count toward the ADA, so we're excited about that. And we're looking at a huge marketing campaign to help our, our parents realize that they can now send their four-year-old to, to a public school instead of the, uh, Child Development Center. So that will add to our ADA as well as the new housing. And so we're monitoring all that closely. The issue though is this too. Right sizing is important for the future. Because, because when you're larger than you should be, then you're eating away money that could be made available to you later. So if you have 10 teachers, when you should have eight teachers, over time, those two extra teachers take from the money that's available for raises or supplies or anything else. It's just not good business to operate heavier than you should.
And I understand that, but also, um, I'm concerned that we're losing students. You know, um, to other, like you said, to charter, um, or to, um, I don't know, inter-district transfers to other school districts. So we need to look at that as well to see how many we're losing to that.
Absolutely. I also want to remind the board that the state of California is experiencing declining enrollment. It has been for the last seven years. So the whole state is losing. In fact, um, they say like LA has lost close to 200,000 kids in the last 10 years. So they, when I was in LA, they were 800,000. LA is more like 550 right now, 600,000 kids. So the state of California is losing, but I agree with you, Mr. Turner. We, we are, we do need to look at the specific, uh, exit for our kids, uh, whether that charters or other opportunities. So we'll, we'll, we've got data.
Yeah, and like I said, our community is growing. They're building homes, huge homes. So it's not like homes are, and, and to buy a home is crazy. The homes are going, you know, so people are moving here. We have the population. We just gotta find out where the kids are going. Justis, do you have any other questions on the interim, first interim?
No. None.
If we were move on to, uh, move on to 1504, Basic Services Presentation of District Trustee Area Assessment, um, Dr. Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Turner. Happy to talk about this. And, uh, turn it over to Mr. Kraus, and he has his full team with him to kind of walk the board through this next steps in terms of trustee areas. Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, members of the board again and members of the community. This evening, we have Mr. Rob Murray, who's the Director with King Consulting. You might recall at the last board meeting, we approved an agreement with them to assess the 2020 census data. And then determine, did the district need to adjust their boundaries or was there nothing that needed to be done? Well, it just so happens that, uh, they did assess and we do need to adjust the boundaries. And this evening, Mr. Rob Murray is here, but also Mr. Todd Robbins, an attorney with Atkinson, Anderson, Loyola, Romo, and Rude, uh, who worked with the district a few years ago on the, uh, trustee area boundaries as well as here with us this evening. And so both of them will be discussing this briefly, talking about the potential timelines and if we're able to speed up those timelines and, uh, what that looks like as well as uh, what the trustee, potential trustee, uh, area new maps might look like. And then so the goal this evening is to get direction on next steps from the board at the end of this presentation. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Murray and Mr. Robbins. You both can unmute, uh, or Mike, or allow them, Mr. Robbins and Mr. Murray to unmute and be able to present.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I'm here and I appear to be live. Um, so first, I do just want to express my condolences, uh, for the passing of Trustee Hunter. I heard all of your words at the start of the meeting and was very moved. I certainly wish I'd had the opportunity to know her better. Uh, but I do want to get into, uh, the presentation that we planned here tonight. Uh, so again, I'm Rob Murray, the Director of Demographics and Planning with King Consulting. Uh, I was, uh, presented to you before, so I'll move into, uh, the presentation here. Uh, but please just let me know what questions that you have along the way and uh, certainly with anyone else, uh, who needs to pitch in to clarify anything. So with that, if we can go ahead and move to slide. Okay, so just a quick, uh, we'll review, uh, the process and the timeline. And again, we'll hear input on, uh, perhaps this is kind of the default timeline with regularly scheduled meetings, but I believe there is, uh, some additional input that we might receive on that. Uh, we'll review those criteria, which we are reviewing these trustee areas. Uh, and then as Mr. Kraus already indicated, uh, since we do know based on the analysis of your areas that an adjustment is required, we wanted to not just point that out, but come to you with one example of a potential solution. Uh, just so that you can see what that kind of adjustment might look like. And then we can look at some next steps. So, uh, the next slide, please. Okay, and so, uh, yep, so we, we have crossed off and completed that. Or in the process now of doing that analysis of the current areas and the presentation of that example. And then uh, again, based on, uh, the assumptions of regular board meetings, uh, we would come back in January with official options based on any further discussion tonight. Uh, and that potential opportunity for the board to adopt a map, the ultimate deadline for districts who already have trustee areas is before the first of March of the year after the release of census data. So again, you would have additional regular meetings should the process need to continue. That would be available.
Uh, Mr. Murray, if I could ask a question, as, can you go back to that timeline, Mike, for a moment? So perhaps say, uh, if the, uh, district decided to have, uh, special meetings, um, because what you have are our regular meetings. Is that also a possibility to be able to do that, uh, Mr. Murray? And Mr. Robbins, if you could speak to that?
Yeah, let me, let me jump in and answer that question because it may be more of a legal question. Um, the first thing to note is that ED code section 5019.5, which is what requires us to go through this process. Uh, the only timeline listed in that ED code section is that we need to be done by February 28th. There's nothing in there that prescribes, uh, you know, the multiple meetings that we had to undertake when we first transitioned to buy trustee area elections. So the board can do this as quickly, uh, as it needs to, uh, which I guess is a long way of saying, Mr. Kraus, that yes, special meetings are fine in this process. So if that is needed, uh, for any reason, the board could certainly call a special meeting to, if it wanted to, uh, review final mapping options, uh, prior to the January 11th meeting, it could certainly do that.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, just again, that quick review of, uh, what we're working with under the CVRA is 2019, uh, that the district adopted its trustee areas. But, uh, as was just mentioned, uh, when the decennial census, which is what's constitutionally mandated at the federal level, was conducted and every 10 years, once that data is released, uh, again, before March 1st of the next year, uh, all districts who elect by trustee area must update those trustee areas depending on how those populations look. So we can go ahead and get into that. Uh, next slide, please. And so your current trustee area, so we are going to show two maps side by side as we look through all of these. One that shows the full extent of your district. And then one that, uh, as indicated by that red box on the left-hand map, then zooms in uh, so that you can see greater detail, uh, label all of the school sites. Uh, and just see a little bit better with the streets and where some of those boundaries are. So these are trustee areas that you are currently utilizing. And you can see those populations by the 2020 census. And I want to go ahead and move to the next slide so that I can point out, uh, one of the big things with 2020, uh, that was a new development in the census this year was a breakout of the institutionalized population with the intention that, uh, for a lot of purposes, uh, this population would not be represented in the population counts as represented by the elected board. So that, uh, these numbers, um, have made that adjustment. And so the remaining population, based on the 2020 census of the district, you see is fi- uh, 59,174, uh, which means rounding to the nearest whole number, uh, the average size of each trustee area should be about 11,835. When we talk about total variance, what we're really doing here is we take your largest area by population and we see what, what percent difference it is from that pure average. And we take your smallest area and do the same thing. And the total variance, so the percent larger and the percent smaller should not exceed 10%. And in this case, uh, you see you have one area that is 23% larger than the average and an area that is 45.5% smaller. So, uh, a high total variance of 68.5% and adjustment will be required. We can move to the next slide, please. So again, I didn't want to just come and say that, uh, we wanted to go ahead and present a look at, uh, just how a potential adjustment could look that would bring all of the areas within that 10% variance threshold that we're talking about. And the first thing is just a reminder that with the census data, it comes out in a variety of geographies. You can look at the whole country, you can look at state, and it goes down and down and down in size, but the smallest level is called a census block. And these are not uniform in size or in population. Uh, but the big thing is we can't split them any further. So a whole block has to move that whole population. Some of your blocks don't have any people in them. Your largest one has 722 people in it. And those 722 people move all as a package into one trustee area or they can't be split up. So with that in mind, we can go, oh, and, and the map also of course sho- uh, showed you there that you do have definite concentrations of population with some, uh, spaces in between that have relatively little population. So again, this is just an example of an adjustment option. And, uh, the intention here was to show how, uh, that population that population balance could be achieved with the smallest amount of territory being shifted between trustee areas, keeping uh, as much of the book of the current trustee areas intact as possible, while uh, making sure that the populations were balanced. So again, this is just one way and we can certainly develop additional alternatives. With that said, we can go ahead and view that map. So you see here, uh, the same layout, full extent on the left and a zoom in of the southeast corner on the right. And the thick black lines that you see are the current boundary, so that it's easy to see what has changed. So just kind of starting from the north and working down, uh, trustee area five needed quite a bit more population than taking that northern part of trustee area four into five and just kind of squaring that off. Uh, makes for a concentrated shape and provides the population trustee area four that needs to add a little bit more after donating that territory into five. And so you see uh, two different squares, one out of three and one out of two. And take N, uh, that makes area four and area three the right size as far as population. And then that makes area two just a little small, but since area one was a little too big, uh, just a small adjustment out of area one and into area two that you see there in the south. And then you can see all of those total sizes, we can go ahead and move to the next slide. And so now you see uh, on the bottom again is that uh, initial uh, look that we just had of your current areas. And then you see the difference up top. Now you have a smallest area that is minus four point six percent. A larger area that is plus three point five percent. That leaves you at an eight point one percent total variance, which is comfortably within that ten percent threshold. So again, this is uh, hardly the only approach that we could take, but it is an example of a way that would achieve the required balance of populations. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we did also just want, uh, the schools were labeled on the map, but just to provide a summary, uh, the big change uh, would be in the current areas and five, uh, you have El Mirage and you have the virtual academy that are in area five. We would be shifting Adelanto Elementary, the George VPA and Westside Park Elementary out of four and into five. Area four would still have Braddock and and apologies if this isn't perfectly pronounced, but Victoria Magathen uh, Elementary School uh, remaining in the trustee area for boundary. So that is just again, with this example, uh, what that would mean as far as which schools were within which trustee area. And then moving on to the next line, please, uh, and that would be again, next steps. And as we've discussed, there is certainly the potential uh, to accelerate this timeline if the board were interested in looking into a special meeting to do so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Murray, Mr. Robinson. With that, uh, board, if there's any questions that we may be able to answer for you, we're open at this time.
Just who would like to go first? Trustee Benz, would you like to go first?
Uh, sure. So the first time we did the maps, one of the things that we we were told is that uh, bound, boundaries had had to be looked looked at, you know, now natural bound, boundaries. You, you could not have, you know, like one side of of the street with with house houses. Vote for one air area why while the houses across the street vote for the area. It's kind of hard to see on this map, like where exactly the 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 areas, the new ones are split up. Um, so my first question is, can we get clearer maps so we we can see see the streets? And two, do these new maps fall, follow those guidelines? You know, that the county county has that we we have to follow, follow.
I can certainly speak, uh, I can provide uh, some maps that can uh, really provide maybe a separate map of each area so that you can really see this, all the streets, uh, particularly. And then uh, to the best of my knowledge, the uh, this map would be a valid map. I can certainly consult with Mr. Robbins just to make sure that there is uh, nothing else that would need to be taken into consideration.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I just, you know, because that that was was a big thing that our maps do have to be approved by the the count county. And there's all these guy guidelines that we have to follow, follow, follow. And I just want want to make make sure that we do get approved and we're not getting stuck on, you know, some something li- like that.
We're, we're in a little bit different situation now. Um, this process does not require approval by the county committee. Uh, but we do independently need to make sure that our maps are compliant. Without, without being able to see uh, the demographic data in terms of uh, whether uh, any areas that were majority minority citizens voting age population were positively or negatively impacted by any of the boundary adjustments. I'm not comfortable saying what one hundred percent certainty that these maps are valid, but looking at it and knowing that we have a demographer that knows how to to do this process, uh, I would imagine that the maps likely uh, would be compliant at this point, the the proposed map.
Okay.
Is that, is that all you have, trustee Benz?
For now, yeah, I I may have another another que- question that pops up in my head.
Okay, trustee Akis, do you have a question? Trustee Akis?
She is on mute.
Trustee Akis, uh, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just kind of taking it in. Um, it's, it's kind of hard to take in tonight, but I'm taking it in and I just kind of want to see the maps uh, in person. So I can get kind of a better idea of the area and the streets and everything. Um, I'm seeing it better on the internet here, but in my paperwork, it is very small. So um, it's just nice to kind of get this going and get the conversation going. But I would like more information and to be able to see the maps uh, in person or up closer. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Akis. Trustee Lafrance?
I don't have any questions. I've been on asked some of the questions that I had. And um, I can't really see the maps as well. Um, I just noticed that there's a shift in the schools going into area um, four. But of course, this is not my field, so I would know, you know, the reasoning or how many people are here or there are, you know, more discussion. I'm pretty sure we will have more, so I'll have a clear understanding.
That, that's a, a good point that you bring up about the shift in schools. One important thing to remember, and it is, it is a challenge to remember, is that the school sites themselves uh, are bounded by the elementary attendance boundaries. So just because there may be five schools in one area and two schools in another, doesn't mean that that area that only has two schools only touches two schools. It may touch three or four total schools because of elementary attendance boundaries. So it's important to think of of the map and the location of the schools in the context of the boundaries and the fact that um, the boundaries likely touch multiple trustees uh, for each elementary school.
Thank you. Okay, my question is, uh, with uh, Mr. Robbins, uh, Mr. Robbins, you were diligent with us uh, two years ago when we uh, initially established our trustee area. Um, we created, we had what, six maps, back six maps that we looked at. And um, even though we tried to balance out the population, we still had to be in compliance with the California Voting Voting Rights Act. And in regards to uh, the Hispanic community, to make sure that they were well represented in each area. So with that being said, was that looked at when creating this map? That you're presenting to us?
And so, go ahead.
I'll defer to our demographer on that. I would imagine that the answer is yes.
Okay.
And uh, yes, I'll just confirm that uh, that in particular, uh, with reference to the Hispanic or Latino population, uh, that your district is uh, uh, overall sixty point nine percent Hispanic and Latino as of the twenty twenty census and that every trustee area presented uh, maintains a majority of total population. Uh, and again, I uh, per uh, comment made by Mr. Robbins earlier, I, we can also make sure that we're breaking that out with the voting age population when we go into this in more detail as a formal map option.
Okay. Now, we're also, we're looking at, we had some discussion on this timeline. We will need to do this a lot sooner than uh, what's here. And um, um, because we have an area that we must fill, um, and we're on a timeline for that. And our timeline is December, January twenty ninth. So we have to get these maps approved before that time so we can appoint a new trustee, which has to be done within a timeframe. So um, I don't know how hard we could work, or are you going to present, you're going to present a different map so we? I'm sorry.
I have the dates, if you want me to show. We said a special board meeting uh, on January fourth, Mr. Murray, uh, where the board would uh, be presented with some map options. A regular board meeting on January eleventh, who would vote on the map option. At the same time, on January eleventh, we will announce uh, trustee Hunter's vacancy as well as the process for appointment. The 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 timeline that's really pressing us is the appointment of the uh, trustee out of area five. But of course, we want to make sure the boundaries are set uh, before we appoint so that we can have the 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 accurate uh, address for potential candidates in area five. So we're looking to do this in two days and and have a board vote by January eleventh. Uh, looking at some options on on January fourth, uh, is that doable from your perspective?
Yes, I was just, I, uh, my personal meeting uh, availability is good for January fourth and the eleventh was already on my radar as one of your regular meetings. And then as far as uh, developing options, uh, it would certainly just be uh, some guidance from the board on you know, additional, you know, additional, how many additional options they might want to see, if there are particular directions that because I I presented one tonight that I viewed as kind of finding a way to make the uh, least number of changes while keeping the basic shape of the current areas. But if there's another approach, I can certainly work to bring an option that reflects that to the January meeting.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Murray. One of the things that I heard from the board, I just, just to give you a couple of ideas of of course, is the racial balance. And I, I, I think what's most important is the racial balance by voting age. You know, and then um, I'm also here that the board wants to uh, be able to see their areas uh, with a little bit better zoom on it so they can see the streets. And so then trustee Turner, if there are other things you want uh, the team to consider. Now, those are just what I've heard the board say so far.
Oh, what we want to see is we want to have some options because we want to make sure that we, we're in compliance. Um, I know the last time we did this, it was brand new to us. We had a lot of time, well, we extended our time. Right now, we cannot extend our time due to the fact that we have to do an appointment within sixty days. And our sixty days will be of January twenty ninth. So I know it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work uh, on your behalf to get us these maps, but I just want to make sure that we are in compliance with uh, the California Voting Rights Act. Because that was very, that was the reason why we went to trustee. So uh, make sure that those, those uh, areas, just second, Dr. Mitchell, just a second. I just want to make sure that those areas are covered and that we are legally and we are in compliance. Okay, Dr. Mitchell, you're saying something?
Yeah, I just was going to ask you, trustee Turner, uh, just to give direction here. Uh, about, you said you saw like six versions, like how many, many uh, how how many samples would you like to see? Mr. Murray, how many is kind of feasible, do you think?
Dr. Mitchell, could I jump in real quick?
Please, Mr. Robbins, yeah.
Just an important consideration for the board to remember, uh, under, under the ed code section five zero one nine point five. Our only obligation is to rebalance after the census. The ed code, that particular ed code section makes a distinction between rebalancing and reconfiguration. So I don't recommend that we give the demographer um, direction to really take too many different approaches with the map such that it would change the the, kind of the basic shape of the map, uh, the basic shape of the trustee areas. We should just be moving lines here and there in order to uh, rebalance the population to get us back under that ten percent variance.
So what you're saying, Mr. Robbins, is the work was pretty much done. When we established the trustee area, now we just need to rebalance just to get, rebalance the population.
For this process, the work was done and we just need to readjust. If in the future, if in the future, the board says we would like to make wholesale changes to to how our maps look and you know, the kind of the basic format and and the directions that they're oriented and things like that, you can go through a separate process and do that. We just are not allowed to do that as part of this rebalancing process.
Okay, so we're just rebalancing right now based on the census. So this should be relatively easy. Board, you know, if we can get two maps, I'm good with two. What do you, what would you like to see?
I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, we, I, again, we're just trying, trying to bow, balance it out and not change completely all the air areas. So, you know, I just think mo- mostly be be clear on, on the map so that we we can see exact, exactly where they're, they're at.
Trustee Lafrance? You want to jump in?
I'm in agreements. I'm really okay with this map itself. I mean, if we're just tweaking because of, you know, the new census data, you know, they practically look, you know, not that much different than the ones that we had before. I mean, it's just a tweak here or there. I just can't seem to read the streets, but that's something different. But the maps look the same now, just a little bit, uh, you know, a little bit different here, north or west, east or south or whatever. They're, they're practically the same.
Trustee Akis?
Yeah, I pretty much agree. I I did have someone from the public though text me and they're asking me if we are going to do a public hearing. Are we going to do it like we did last time where we're going to allow the public to submit their ideas or maps? Or is this just going to be uh, because it's already been approved and um, we have our map? Is, are we just going to do the little tweaking a little bit here and there? And is that sufficient or does it need to be a bigger thing? I I just need clarification.
But it it does not need to be a bigger thing under this process. Given our, our kind of time constraints, um, one possible solution could be that the two maps that are presented on January fourth uh, could be immediately posted to the district's website for review and comment uh, on the internet. And then we could, you know, compile that information and present it to the board on the eleventh. But because this is just a rebalancing, I think uh, trustee Akis, you use the term tweak. Uh, that's probably the most appropriate way to go about doing that. And 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 presentation of additional maps and things of that nature could take us outside of that limiting factor of rebalancing that we're supposed to stay within under the ed code.
Okay, so if the public does have any uh, comments or anything they want to make, how would they go about saying something, uh, if it's going to be brought back to us at the next meeting or sooner?
Well, ideally, it could be posted on the district's website with a a comment option. Dr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I was going to say, so so trustee Akis will, we will create a survey link on our district uh, website and post those maps. And so just like we do L cap and other other, other situations where we need feedback, we'll do the same thing. We also could do a, a phone, dialer phone where folks can complete survey information from a robocall. So we'll do several options to make sure uh, we're, we're. So we'll do several options to make sure uh we're we're getting uh input from our public.
Okay, thank you.
So my question on January fourth, on this, we just uh just rebalancing. Do we need a public, we need a public hearing, we still need a public hearing, can we do that on January fourth?
Uh, uh, my recommendation would be, first of all, you you're not legally required to have a public hearing, but I can understand the board, the board wanting to have one. My recommendation would be to hold the public hearing on the eleventh immediately prior to consideration and action on s- selecting a map.
Okay, so once we select the map on January fourth, we could do a public hearing on the eleven and approve the map on the eleven.
That's right.
Okay, great. So the fourth is just to approve the map?
The fourth is just for a presentation of the two options.
Okay, okay.
No, no vote, no vote on the fourth.
No vote?
The public hearing on the eleventh and then vote on the eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now the board, we all agree on two maps?
Sure, yes.
Maps, and I have gotten the instruction, you will definitely be able to see all the streets that you need to. I'll uh make sure that I'm producing those uh with again zoomed in version at each one. So that uh there's no question about where each edge is between every area. And you can see exactly which territories would be proposed under uh our two map options. Uh to move from one trustee area to another again, just for the purpose of rebalancing the areas that you currently use.
Great, are there any additional questions for um Mr. Robbins? And I'm sorry, I I didn't get your, your name.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray. Okay, well, thank you so much, that was very informative. And I think we know what we need to do at this point. Okay.
All right. Thank you and good evening.
Board President, just for clarification, uh the board, the trustees uh with consensus is wanting us to hold a special board meeting on January fourth to do a presentation. And then uh the um hearing and the vote will happen on January eleventh and two maps will be presented, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, plus 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 posting the maps. Answer information on the website.
Thank you.
And the maps will be posted on the website on the fourth, after the fourth special meeting?
Correct.
Right, okay.
We gather feedback from the fourth to the eleventh, well, as well as offer a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to fifteen oh five business services, presentation of proposed community facility districts, the F, the CFDs number four modification. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, and so this ongoing work that uh Mr. Kraus is leading us in to make sure that we are maximizing the revenues that we're receiving from these, from this new housing that's coming up. And so we're excited, this is, this is revenue talk, so this is, this gets Mr. Kraus excited, so Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, good evening, members of the board, this Mike, while you tee that up the presentation. Uh this evening, we'll be talking about community facilities district number four. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Jesse Landry, who's the district uh community facility district advisor with Key Analytics. And we also have Mr. Rob Anslow, an attorney with Atkinson, Anderson, Loyola, Rumo and Rudd. Because a lot of this involves a lot of legalese information related to CFDs. And we wanna make sure that when we move forward on this, uh that we're doing it the right way and the best way for the district. And so both of these consultants will be tag teaming with me this evening. And so I'll be punting various aspects over to them uh in their expertise. With that, Mike, can you turn to the next slide? So just a quick background on community facility district number four, originally formed by the district back in two thousand and six. And what has happened is there has not been uh any, pretty much no development on it uh for many, many years. And it was intended to be developed about two hundred and seventy six single family uh units, but uh nothing occurred because there was the great recession. You might recall, a lot of housing stalled, but as we heard earlier in this board meeting, every dirt lot in the high desert, somebody's looking to build something on. And in fact, we're excited because CFD number four is one of those lots. And so, Mike, the next slide. So D R Horton, which is a major housing developer, they purchased this property in two thousand twenty one, uh CFD four. And they're the only homeowner over there, basically, even though they're a corporation, they own the whole lot. And uh they're looking to develop these homes and call it the Santolina Project. So they have begun the construction and sale of these units over there. If you go over by uh Melva Davis and Cobalt and Mojave, you might see some homes going up uh on the dirt lot that was there, that's CFD number four. And uh they're going up fairly quickly, so they're looking to close homes uh in January of two thousand twenty two. And we're hoping that they will bring families that will wanna have children or bring children with them. And then they wanna have the final sales targeted for about late two thousand twenty three. And so as we move forward on this, we had to look at the original terms fifteen years ago. What was in place then is not what we would like to see in place now. Because we wanted to bring it up to current uh current codes, current status of the project uh with D R Horton, work with him as a partner. And they're working with us and our uh CFD advisor and attorney on how to best utilize uh this housing tract. With that, the next slide, Mike? So what they're proposing is a uh modification to the original terms of community facility district number four. And basically, the what they would wanna do as the sole landowner, D F Horton, wants to look at updating the terms. They wanna look at the special taxes of facilities to be funded by the CFD to better align with the development plans. And briefly, Jesse Landry is going to touch on this. So Jesse, if if Mike, if you can allow Jesse and Rob Anslow to unmute themselves, um they're gonna tag team on this slide for me. Just give a little bit more detailed information on what the modification is uh all about.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Kraus, uh this is Jesse Landry uh over at Key Analytics. So just to mention, as Mr. Kraus had said earlier, um when a CFD is formed, there are a number of parameters that are set and they run the life of the CFD if they're not changed. These parameters, they include the total amount of bonds that can be issued by the CFD, the mountain duration of the CFD taxes. Um in addition to um the specific facilities that the CFD can actually fund. So all these, all those uh parameters are set up at the time of formation based on the assumptions we have about the development. So as Mr. Kraus mentioned, now that we've had some changes, um and and now D R Horton's come in sixteen years later, completely different change uh expectations for the project. They've come forward and said, hey, let's change some of these parameters to to align with our project. So the specific items that they're looking to change, and we we could go to the next slide here on slide five. These are the specific items they're looking to address uh through these change proceedings and modification process. They'd like to amend the rate method of apportion, apportionment, and that details how we levy the special taxes. What we're gonna do is reset the final termination date of the CFD special tax, because obviously this is laid dormant for fifteen years. So we need to reset that tax so it terminates at an appropriate time along with this development. The other, one of the other major items is changing those facilities that can be funded through the CFD. I'll I'll point out the biggest item here is that the CFD originally was gonna fund facilities for the Victorville Sanitation District. That agency no longer exists, so there there's no facilities that we can fund for them because they've been replaced now by the Victorville Water District. So one of the items we'll be changing is I naming the Victorville Water District as one of the agencies that can receive funding and provide facilities for this community. And then the the final main modification is about the original bonded indebtedness. So one of the parameters we set up says, these are the total amount of bonds that the CFD can issue over the entire life, the thirty, thirty-five year life of the CFD. Um over these last fifteen years, uh the facilities cost for these agencies like the city, the water district, and for the school, they've all increased over those fifteen years. So this modification just involves us getting those uh set up to today's expectations for the cost for the facilities. So provided that the district decides that they wanna move forward with this process, um it would, there, we're gonna take these two items that we have tonight. Um and just to note, these are, these are items that are uh agenda items sixteen point oh seven and sixteen point oh eight, the two resolutions, the oh five and oh six resolution. Provided we approve these, we'll be coming back at the January twenty fifth meeting with a a another set of documents. That's gonna approve a replacement funding agreement for the CFD, we'll hold a public hearing and then we'll have an election process that's a CFD landowner election. And that'll really finalize uh the process of us sending these new parameters. And it's gonna, the the key that we're trying to target here, another, another timeline that we're trying to hit is to make sure that we complete that election, complete that process prior to when D R Horton closes its first home to an individual homeowner. After that point, we don't have this option to do a landowner election anymore. So this is our, this is the expected timeline, we'll hit the December fourteenth meeting, January twenty fifth for the election. Um and then that'll put us in place to be able to have these parameters changed and updated uh prior to that first home closing on January twenty eighth.
Great, thank you, Jesse, I don't, I think that was the last slide. And uh Mr. Rob Anslow with Atkinson, Anderson, Loyola, Rumo and Rudd is here as well. Rob, could you just briefly give a summary on the legal side of this? Jesse gave the overview of the, as the administrator of the CFD, but just a quick, brief summary of the uh the legal process, the uh requirement that we have to go through in order to facilitate this process.
Sure, Michael, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, everyone, my name is Robert Anslow, I'm a partner with Atkinson, Anderson. Um, thank you to the board and Michael for that introduction. Um, we have to do a couple of things. Number one is, we have to change, there are three elements which Jesse discussed. We have to change two of them in one resolution and the the third, the bonding capacity through a separate resolution. That's under the provisions of the Miller-Rusek, we don't have an option to do that if we wanna move forward. From there, we have to have a public hearing that is more than thirty but less than sixty days from today's date. That's why we targeted January twenty fifth, and that works in as much as it's before the home closings that D R Horton will undertake. So we want to be able to have a single landowner voter, i.e. D R Horton, to do the mail ballot election and complete that on January twenty fifth. Once we do that, um we're essentially in place to allow the home closings to occur. And all of the rest of the CFD change uh processes and proceedings can follow along after that. Um as Michael and Jesse mentioned, we will bring back a funding agreement to the January twenty fifth uh meeting, which will essentially contain all of the new parameters for the use of CFD number four to fund uh school district facilities and also facilities for the city of Victorville and the Victorville Water District. Um be happy to answer any questions that people might have relative to the legal aspects here. If there are numbers questions, then I'll let Jesse handle those.
Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
No, I have not.
Okay. Now, is the trustee La French, do you have any?
Um, no, we would be here all night for me to figure it out, I'm gonna network with um with um Michael and um get some one-on-one training for me, thank you.
Okay, I do have a question, a legal question. Is there any way that um they can close, D D R Horton can close before January twenty eighth, before our January twenty fifth meeting?
I don't, uh, they're, they've told us that their escrows close at the earliest to January twenty eighth. In order, and they were undertaking this process partially at their request, so it is very much in their interest not to step on the process and accelerate the home closings.
Okay.
They would have, it it would be very much not in their interests to do that.
Okay, okay, because you said if we undertook this process after they uh did their initial closing, we could not make these changes. Am I correct in?
It's functionally, that's correct. We, there is ways to do it, but it would take so long and involve such an involved procedure that it's functionally impossible. And again, the 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 D R Horton is the landowner, very much wants this to occur. There is no reason why they would accelerate their their home closings.
Yeah, in in one thing, just to admit, to tag on top of that, D R Horton's actually stalling their home closings in anticipation of us completing this process. So they've actually held off, they know that they cannot close a home until we've completed the election process.
Okay, great, and and the public hearing is what's holding us up because you said it has to be no later than thirty days, but.
It has to be at least thirty days, but no more than sixty days. The only meeting that works, given tonight's, assuming approved uh action tonight, the only meeting that works is January twenty fifth.
Okay, okay, now what, in in terms of dollars, how much are we looking at from two thousand and six to now? So, I know you don't have the exact figures.
Sure, sure, in in, you know, stated again, these are all based on estimates and assumptions, you know, things that we don't know today are, what the interest rates will look like, what the actual development timeline will look like. And specifically, what product mix that D R Horton will ultimately end up building. These will all dictate what the dollar amounts look like, but I have made some assumptions leading into this process. Again, there's a tax, there's two components, there's a tax for school facilities and then there's a tax for the city and water facilities. For the school district, my estimates show um funding of about four point three million for school facilities.
Okay.
And again, that's based on broad assumptions in in what we know today.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much, that was a very clear presentation, I'm looking forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one other thing I'll add is that this briefing uh leads into items sixteen oh seven and sixteen oh eight on the uh agenda.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving into new business, sixteen oh one, approved after school educational and safety plan, can I get a motion to approve?
Uh, Ben, I I mo- motion.
Uh, in a second.
Approve.
Um, in a second, I'm I'm sorry.
La French, in a second.
Okay, La French, second, okay, we're in discussion, Dr. Mitchell?
I'm I'm sorry.
This is to approve the after school educational safety plan.
Yes, I'm sorry. So so thank you, uh I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. DeWise, I'm to discuss this, this uh item.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening again, board members, AESD staff and um community. So this um af- approval of the after school education and safety program is a required element for California ed code. This allows us to apply for the after school funding. And so um in this plan, you'll see it separated into different sections, um safe and supportive environments where we um strive to make sure that the after school program is a continuing, is a continuum of the school day. So you'll hear um uh just a continuation of making sure that there's PBIS, restorative justice, trauma-informed practices. Um, we strive to make sure that students are active and engaged. So you'll see um activities such as art, dance, cooking, robotics, coding. Um, really, a lot of those things come to life um through the day, but it continues through the after school program. We strive to make sure that there's skill building, youth voice and leadership, healthy choices and behaviors. Um and that's uh wellness as well as uh physical wellness at the same time. Uh, we strive to make sure that there's diversity, access and equity, that there's quality staff. But part of that quality staff is also ensuring that there's professional development for the staff um that is leading our students in the after school program. That there's a clear vision, mission and purpose in that we have collaborative partnerships. Um, there's also a quality improvement in place so that any after school program, uh we make sure to measure that they are following what the uh plan says. And that the expectation um is that they communicate, that they communicate with us um entirely. But this is a required item by CDE, and this allows us to continue to apply for funding for our after school programs.
Thank you, Dr. DeWise, uh trustees, do you have any questions regarding um the education and safety plan?
No, I I have none, the the plan look looks clear.
Just being informative. Trustee, um, La French?
I don't have any questions at this, at this time.
Trustee Eckes?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I I I just would like to touch on, as you know, the COVID um pandemic has really affected our children. Um, uh, a, a DTA president, uh, Mrs. Peddely talked about um what's going on in our schools and not just. what's going on in our schools and not just our schools, but schools across the country. Children are acting out. And in this program, focus more on mental health issues. And I know it's focusing on behavior, but I think we need to go a little bit further than that to find out what's going on with our kids, you know, emotionally. So will this, am I in the right area right here, Dr. Dwight's on or can we add more to this?
So in the plan, there, it specifically calls out trauma-informed care, restorative practices. But yes, making sure that that's embedded to make sure that also, it's, it's also mentioned in healthy choices and behaviors as well. So there's two places, but you, you absolutely, we could make sure that we continue to focus on the mental health and well-being for our children.
Because this is needed right now. I'm hearing so many things that's going on and children are really going through a lot more than we could ever know. So, and if not here, maybe we can bring it up in another avenue to address some of these issues. We have to address these issues with our children because it's very important. There's no other comments. I will call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance? Christie Turner?
Christie Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Moving on to sixteen oh two, academic services, the Williams Settlement First Quarter Report that was given to us. I need a motion.
And I mo motion to approve.
A motion by trustee Benz to approve. Is there a second?
Trustee, French, second.
Uh, second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Christie Turner?
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass four zero. I'm moving to sixteen oh three, academic services, approved El Mirage School Revised School Site Plan for Student Achievement. Can I get a motion?
I motion, LaFrance.
I have a motion by trustee LaFrance. Is there a second?
Benz, I say second.
A second by trustee Benz. Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Christie Turner?
Christie Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Sixteen oh four, academic services, approved educational effectiveness grant to secure an allocation of one point nine wait, one million nine hundred sixteen thousand and oh two oh forty-two cents. Can I get a motion to approve?
Benz, I mo motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
LaFrance, second.
And a second by trustee LaFrance. We're in discussion. Any questions? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
Aye.
Christie Turner?
Christie Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Sixteen oh five, business services approved with twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, first interim report. Can I get a motion?
Benz, I mo motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, LaFrance.
A second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Christie, LaFrance?
Aye.
And trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Sixteen oh six, business services, approve, approval of the annual and five-year reportable fee reports for fine twenty-five and resolution twenty-one dot twenty-two dot oh eight as required by government code six six zero zero six. Can I get a motion?
Benz, I, I mo motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, LaFrance.
And a second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Christie Turner?
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Sixteen oh seven, business services, resolution of consideration of the Board of Trustees of the Alonzo Elementary School District acting as a legislative body of the Community Facility District Number Four of the Alonzo Elementary School District to change the rate and method apportionment of special taxes as otherwise to be financed for Community Facility District Number Four. I'm gonna motion.
Benz, I'm a motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, LaFrance.
Second by LaFrance. We're in discussion. Any, any comments?
Can I get a brief, uh, comment from the superintendent on this explanation?
Yes, ha- happy to, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Kraus. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. This is in relation to the agenda item earlier, the CFD presentation. And Rob Anslow is still with us. Rob, could you just briefly give a couple sentences about the resolution sixteen oh seven?
Yeah, this is the first of the two resolutions that we discussed earlier relative to CFD number four. This resolution acts to propose the change to the rate and method of apportionment of the special taxes and also authorizes the changes in the facilities. The next item, sixteen oh eight, would be to change the bonded indebtedness authorization. Both of these resolutions act to call public hearings on January twenty-fifth and they are the first stage in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any further comments? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Christie Turner?
Christie Turner, I, motion pass four zero. Sixteen oh eight, Business Services Resolution of Intention, Intention of the Board of Trustees of the Alonzo Elementary School District acting as legislative body of the Community Facility District Number Four of the Alonzo Elementary School District to incur bond indebtedness in an agreement in an aggregated principal amount, not to see twenty million dollars with the proposed Community Facility District Number Four of the Alonzo Elementary School District. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve.
Motion by trustee LaFrance. Second?
Benz, I said, second?
Yeah, second by trustee Benz. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a question. My computer seems to be stuck on one of these older ones. Which one are we on?
We're on sixteen oh eight.
Sixteen oh eight. Okay, I was stuck on it, on an older one. So this is a resolution, intention of the board. Can I get a brief description of this one too also, so I'm caught up?
Um, I think the, the, the last description, remember he mentioned it was also sixteen oh eight. It was two resolutions that needed to be done.
Okay, so this is another, uh, the other part of the, um, I'm sorry, the, um.
That's okay, Ollie.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time staying with you. Um, okay, so this was, uh, the one he just spoke about and this is the second part of it.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm good with this.
Okay. Okay, um, call for the vote.
Trustee, Benz? And Si? Trustee, Akas?
Aye.
Trustee, LaFrance?
LaFrance, aye.
Christie Turner?
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass four zero. And moving to section seventeen, superintendent's report, uh, events and future activities significant to the district. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee, trustee Turner. Um, I'll try to keep my comments brief. There are some things I want to make sure the public and our staff hears. Let me say, so let me start off with, uh, just talking about our, our district literacy campaign we'll be launching in twenty twenty-two. Our winning slogan is, uh, reading is our passport. Watch our future, watch out future, here we come. This was submitted by, uh, Alonzo Elementary School, first grade class from Ms. Anderson's class. And so we've, uh, that, that slogan was, was selected by, uh, Dr. Dwight's on and her staff as the winning slogan for our district. And so we'll just, uh, want to give a, give a congratulations to Ms. Anderson and her, and her first grade class and Mr., uh, Mr. Rizzo for his leadership over at Alonzo Elementary School, uh, school, every school. Secondly, I want to talk about, uh, we, we just started our appreciative inquiry psych cycles at our schools. We just did one at Columbia Middle School at board, as I told you, our full administrative team met at Columbia, uh, Middle School and we walked classrooms and, and that ended up into a really deep report about, uh, the quality instructional practices that we saw at that building. We plan on doing that across all of our schools and really just, uh, learning to appreciate what our teachers are doing, uh, really to identify, um, learning to identify best practice strategies and then calling it out and then, uh, teachers end up with a nice memo from, from the administrative staff that we write that day. Uh, and then the administrative team at the school cleans it up a little bit and sends it out to staff. And so, uh, thank, thank you, Dr. Dwight, for leading that work. Um, we're looking forward to January third, PD day. Uh, it's just, it's just a great honor to invite great speakers and and, uh, experts throughout our field to, to come into our district and provide, uh, some deep time with our teachers and staff. Uh, we think that, uh, investing in professional learning is a key lever for us. We believe that our, our profession is one that needs constant professional learning, that children change and context changes. And we want to invigorate and inspire our people. And so we're looking forward to January third. Again, thank you, uh, Dr. Dwight, for your leadership there. I wanted to congratulate, uh, our own Dr. Antonia Hunt, Principal at Mesa Linda Middle School. She's been selected to present at the National Social Science and Technology Conference in March. Uh, she will share her doctoral research on the long-term implications of reclassification of English learners. Uh, this conference is hosted by National Science, Social Science Association, so we want to congratulate her uh, and her, and her efforts, uh, in her research. Thank you. We want to thank, uh, the city of Victorville's Bears, uh, nonprofit group, uh, Bear stands for Benefit Everyone Assist Recreation and Sports. They gave Morgan K. Cage six, uh, they donated six, uh, bikes to Morgan K. Cage students. And so thank you, Victorville Bears, uh, for your generous donation. I also want to congratulate Diane Lynn and C S C A for your, for your, uh, for, uh, donating to our ARC. Uh, our Alonzo Community Resource Center, as I, as, um, as I'm told, the, uh, C S C A gets together, it has a great Christmas, Christmas party. I did ask if I could crash it. Uh, Diane told me no, but I am sad about that. Maybe I'll try to crash it next year. Maybe I'll come in disguise or something, uh, just because I want to be part of the party too. But they raised a lot of money for, um, for Alonzo students and residents. So thank you, Diane and C S C A members for your gracious donation to ARC. I see what else we got here. Happy to report that our Hill three sixty board, you approved, uh, contract with Hill three sixty shortly, um, a couple of more means ago to provide, uh, testing services, COVID nineteen testing to our schools. And we're happy to report, we, we have testing services at each of our schools. Um, we started December ninth. All staff and students are able to test for free. Uh, flyers went out to schools and so we, we've asked our administrators to push those flyers out to parents as well. And then we're also happy, board, to, to announce that we will be hosting a, a vaccination clinic uh, for, at Mesa Linda and at Alonzo Elementary School, uh, to, uh, to, uh, start vaccinating our five-year-olds to, I believe it was what, five to twelve. And so for those parents that want to get their children vaccinated, we will be, uh, hosting a vaccination center on December eighteenth and January eighth at Mesa Linda Middle School and Alonzo Elementary School. And so we'll be, we'll make sure to get that information out across our, our community uh, so that parents can take advantage of those vaccination services. Uh, and then I also want to talk about, um, I did host a supper with the superintendent on November eighteenth, as well as the second one on December ninth. It went very well, pretty well attended. Um, and, and we just, uh, got some great feedback from parents, great questions as always. Uh, just so happy to interact, uh, with our parents in a very informal environment. Uh, we realize sometimes the board meeting is very formal. And so we try to do these super, supper with the superintendent to create an informal touch to allow parents just to ask a question. We've got a few dozen questions asked and answered both through text and, and out loud. And so just, just looking forward to the next one. Not sure when it is. But those are some great events and we'll continue doing that. Uh, it is our sincere interest, uh, to hear from our parents and community how we can better serve you. And then I want to, uh, we have two key retirements tonight. Uh, Regina Aguilera, who's the Secretary of Special Education, congratulations on your retirement. And then we also want to congratulate Ruth Farley, our supervisor for transportation, transportation. She's retiring. And so I, I think they both have parties tomorrow or the next day. And so, Xavier, if you could share that information for board, uh, so they.
It's on Thursday and it's on their calendar.
Oh, great, great. Board, so please drop by if you have the time. And we want to wish, uh, both Regina and special blessings as going to the next, the next part and the funnest part of your life. You, you've worked hard all your life and you deserve it. And so wish you well. Uh, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, just for an F Y I on, uh, Ruth Farley's, I'm showing December fifteenth tomorrow morning.
Are you, trustee? Yes, I, I apologize. They did and they moved it for an early, for ten o'clock. I, I hope that's reflecting on your calendars. If not, I'll make the adjustment. Um, it was moved to ten o'clock and Regina is now, uh, at two o'clock. So I'll put those on the calendar for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then Amy's celebration service is Thursday?
Yes, thank, thank you so much, trustee Akas. So, uh, the family sent out a, uh, community, uh, event starts at three o'clock Thursday at the, uh, the baseball field. Help me out, too.
Maverick Stadium?
The Maverick Stadium on Thursday at three o'clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are my.
Okay, Dr. Mitchell, will you send staff a copy of that flyer so they'll have it in an email? All staff? Okay, it's already out. Okay.
Yes.
And we will be bringing another plaque uh, to the family Thursday. So I, I, I wasn't sure if you, if there's any other board members going to retain. But I, I know you wanted to read it of both the funeral and the celebration on Thursday to trustee Turner. So we have another one.
Okay.
Will we also have one put in the boardroom?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And her picture?
Yes, the, the, the whole, the plaque that you gave today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Um, moving to, uh, section eighteen, we have a second closed session. We will be taking items eighteen oh two and eighteen oh four to close session. Eighteen oh two, government code section five four nine five seven point six, update with labor negotiation for C S C A and A D T A, A D T A. A D T A, long day. A D T A, long day. And eighteen oh three government code section four eight nine zero zero, school board consideration for student discipline. We have one case. And then eighteen oh four public employee performance evaluation. The superintendent will be finishing at that tonight. That's government code section five four nine five seven. Okay, section nineteen, public testimony before closed session. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any requests? Dr. Mitchell, you're muted.
Yes, we do not have any public comments for close session.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to section twenty, we were recessed to close session. Can I get a motion?
Benz, I mo- motion?
A motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Second, La French.
I have a second by trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Trustee Benz, aye. Trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I motion pass four zero. The time is nine fifty seven P M. We're in closed session. Thank you, everyone.
See, I love your background.
My winter background, thank you.
I wish I was there. It feels cold in this house, but that's such, so pretty peaceful.
Yeah, me too. Feel like I'm in Big Bear.
Okay, we're gonna get ready here.
See everyone.
You see everyone? Okay, moving on to section twenty one, we convene open session. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Benz?
Present.
Trustee Akas?
Present.
Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present. We have a call four zero. The time is eleven thirty five P M. Okay, section twenty two, announced reportable actions taken in closed session. The board did take action in closed session. In the case of academic services, student expulsion, discipline case number twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two dash ten. It was moved by trustee Akas and second by trustee Benz to approve the recommendation of the administrative panel. To expel student for the remainder of the first semester of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. The placement for the second semester of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year will be at Mason Linda Middle School. Further, that the board accept administrative panel rec- rehabilitation plan, which include the following. People must attend individual or small group counseling and support. People must complete a decision making program. People must follow a behavior contract that include going to class on time. The report of the votes is as follows. We had trustee Benz, nay. Trustee Akas? I. Trustee La French, nay. Trustee Turner, nay. Motion fail, four, three, one. Okay, moving on to section twenty three, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Benz, I mo- motion?
Okay, I, let me back up. I, I, I have to back that up. Okay, what the board did vote for is. The rehabilitation plan. So the pupil must attend individual or small group counseling and support. The pupil must complete a decision making program. The pupil must follow a behavior contract that include going to class on time. So the, the recommendations did what, you know, the, what do you call it? I'm so tired. The disciplinary actions.
Rehabilitation.
Vote for the expulsion. But we did vote for the plan. Okay, so now I need in the. A motion to adjourn, and that was trustee Benz, and I need a second.
I second, La French.
La French, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz and sign. Trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I motion pass four zero. The time is eleven thirty nine P M. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.